County Council for October 20th, 2015. Those that would like to join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgiving us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We do not have any expectations. The Lord has given us this kingdom, and the power, and the glory of it. Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion if I could to approve the legislative minutes from October 6, 2015.
Does that move?
Second. Motion second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Minutes been approved. I entertain a motion to approve the work session minutes from October 6, 2015.
Does that move?
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Minutes have been approved. Good morning, Ms. Kramer.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the county council, ladies and gentlemen. A couple of things before we start the regular-
Get that mic right next to you.
I'm sorry?
You need to get that mic closer.
Is that better?
Yeah, they say they're having trouble.
Thank you.
Hearing.
Couple of things before we begin the regular agenda this morning, if you will. All of you received a notice from the State Highway Administration, but this is for the benefit of the public. The State Highway Administration is going to be doing major constructing, construction next year along the Route 13 bypass, replacing 11 bridge structures. So there'll be pretty significant construction beginning in the summer of next year and ending. And the reason I'm bringing it up now is that the notice which we received indicates there will be a public hearing held tomorrow night at the Wycomico Youth and Civic Center from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. So parties who are interested might want to drop by the Civic Center and learn more about what the State Highway Administration plans to do. The bridges, the repairs to the bridges will be for the purpose of extending the life of the structures. And somebody has a birthday today. I think it might be Bob Culver.
I am older than someone younger than somebody.
Happy birthday.
First on your printed agenda this morning is Ms. Allison Poulter, who has something about downtown Salisbury Hero Day, bring to your attention.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Podium's good, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
Good morning, President Cannon and council members. Thank you so much for letting me be here today. Executive Culver, thank you for letting me speak. Hero Day is in its second year. Last year was incredibly successful, and this year is looking to be even more so. The driving force behind Hero Day was to offer a bridge of communication between those that have served this nation and this community on any level, and the rest of the civilian population, to sort of offer an open conversation about what service means and what it looks like, and how we can not only be a military-friendly community, because we really very much are, but also be a military-inclusive community, meaning we want you to be our Cub Scout leaders, we want you to run for office, we want you to be homeowners. If you're choosing to call this community home, we really want that to be a call to us to encourage opportunities for inclusion in the community, to really call it home and be a part of it. So that said, four of us last year, who are all military-affiliated, I'm an Army spouse, my husband is stationed here, decided that a good event and a good way to sort of open those lines of communication is a good exertion of physical fitness. So we started with a 5K and a dog walk. Both registration fees go 100%. The 5K goes to Operation Week Care, which is a huge organization here in the community that not only sends care packages to deployed troops, but also helps with emergency assistance situations, building wheelchair ramps, that sort of thing, here in the local area. And the 5K proceed, or the dog walk proceeds, excuse me, all go to Warrior Canine Connection, which is a regional service dog training facility that offers veteran-trained, specifically one-on-one veteran-trained service dogs. So we are really excited about it. The community has been incredibly eager to be a part of it, all the way from Boy Scouts at their level of community service, the fire departments, police department, sheriff's department, all, everyone has sort of just jumped in to be a part of it. So I just wanted to come today and sort of share our message, answer any questions you may have, and invite you to join us on the 7th of November. The 5K kicks off at 9 o'clock in the morning. We will start everything at 8:30. Wycomico High School will be presenting the colors. We have a local Army soldier who will be singing the anthem. We will have some remarks from Delegate Mary Beth Carosa, Delegate Carl Anderton, then-mayor-to-be Jake Day, who is also a lieutenant in the National Guard. So we are very excited, and I just wanted to come and share those notions with you this morning. I will pass these around, or I will leave them at the table, whichever you prefer.
You can pass them around.
Okay.
You might want to put it up for the public to see it, just so they recognize it.
Okay.
Just turn it around.
Oh, oh, yes. Ooh, I'm graceful.
It's self-promotion. And you can, yeah, if you just want to pass-
And these are hanging up all over town. Many businesses have the smaller hand cards for you to take home and put on your refrigerator so you don't forget. But again, thank you so much for letting me come and share about it. We are really excited and look forward to seeing all of you on the 7th of November.
So Ms. Poulter, part of this, part of this now is the 5K run?
It is.
Now, the other part, I participated in last year.
The dog walk.
Yeah, if you want to briefly explain that, because I thought that was fun, because I don't do 5K runs.
Right, I don't really do 5K runs either. I organize it, but I don't run it. So the 5K dog walk has been put together largely by Steve Mizell, who is a Salisbury firefighter, and was also an, is an Air Force veteran. Bring your dog, bring your family, bring your kid, have them walk a dog. We don't really care, but it is just a great way to sort of take in downtown Salisbury. They walk the 5K course. We will have it lined with American flags this year that are being provided by the Rotary Groups for their Flags for Heroes Project, and Boy Scouts handing out water and filling dog water bowls. It's a beautiful stroll downtown, and the registration fee goes to Warrior Canine Connection. So it's a really easy way and fun way to have a huge impact on their charity.
Great, great. Any questions? Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate that, and good luck with everything. Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item for council's consideration is Resolution Number 156, 2015, at the request of the county executive approving the Wycomico County 10-year comprehensive solid waste management plan, 2014 to 2024.
I entertain a motion to accept Resolution 156, 2015.
Does that move?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Counselors, you'll recall, of course, had a work session on this at your last meeting.
I have a question. And it, of course, is for Weston, so-
Mr. Young, if you could, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
For the recyclable materials, we've had, we're showing 30% of our recyclables are being done in the county, but we haven't had any growth in that 30% over the past five years. We assume that the state will require more than the 20% that we have been delegated for that time period, and 30% is, but 30% again is what we've attained five years ago, and we haven't shown any increase in that 30%. Is there something that's going to increase that 30% over the next couple of years? Because I assume in a few years, the state's going to say, okay, you're still at 30%. What kind of growth are you showing?
So, right now, as you mentioned, it's 20% is the state mandatory for Wycomico County. The more rural counties are at 25% or 20%. So by, to address your question, there's several limitations there. One of the main ways we get recyclables are citizens dropping off at one of our 11 convenience centers or eight recycling centers. So it's citizens having to do that. There's also what there's an actual market for. So there's, plastics tend to be numbered 1 through 7, and we tend to do three of those consistently. Plastic bags, like the grocery bags, usually grocery stores have a, have a place for that. But the other thing, and just talking on plastics in general, these percentages are based on tons, not on cubic yards or any sort of volume. So we can collect all the plastics we want, but it is very little in terms of increasing our number, whereas if we took in more glass, which there really isn't a market for glass, we could greatly increase our numbers. They do allow brush, so if we have more options for bringing in brush, it's really, and it's, the way the law's written, it's awkward at times, because if you pull something out of the waste stream, like concrete, well, they don't want to add concrete to it because it's a tonnage method. So if we got into construction recycling, none of those numbers would count, because it would greatly offset the, where things are based on tonnage. So it's kind of hard to say, well, we're recycling concrete here, and we're recycling, say, the same volume of plastic here, but in terms of weight, it's, I don't know, it's complicated. So with, where we're at 30% now, if there are markets open up for other types of plastics, we could start accepting other types of plastics. Right now, we have to just landfill them like everything, like everything else. In terms of the other recyclables, metal, you know, we're, education and outreach is one way of doing it. We need to start following up with the apartments and condominiums and make sure that they're offering it, because they have to by law. There's the special events where if you have over 200 people, you need to provide own public space, and there's certain criteria, but we need to start providing, or whoever's hosting it needs to start providing a recycling option. But that being said, if there's food trucks there, that doesn't mean what they're serving their food on is recyclable. So a lot of times, what, the trash being generated or the products being generated are not recyclable. So in some cases, to increase the rate, like the zero-waste model that the state is pushing, if you read the document, a part of it's also getting manufacturers to start making those considerations, such that they make items that can be recycled at a later point, rather than producing things that then we just have to landfill, because we don't have a market for it. If that, does that make sense? You know, we're doing what we can to increase our recycling with electronics, we're doing what we can with tires, but, but we do kind of sit at that 30%. If we had a direct hit with a hurricane, we'd be producing so much mulch from the debris that was coming in that our recycling number would jump significantly, but then we'd be right back to it. So, yeah, it's, looking at other ways we can try to recycle things. We had a mattress recycling program for a while, but then that market dried up. The company that was buying those backed off. So we're limited by where we can send it, who will take it. In some cases, there's, there's many types of plastics that are produced, but there's no incentive to recycle those. There's no companies that are doing that. So we're limited by the markets in a lot of ways. We're also limited because we're not doing curbside pickup. We have citizens go and dump it, and citizens don't have to. You know, we would like to, and that's where the education and outreach comes in, where we try to encourage people and let them know, the more you do, you know, it saves the county money, the landfill lasts longer. But, you know, there, I guess there's no incentive necessarily.
And that's my question. What type of incentive, or how are you making the public aware that we need to increase recycling?
Right now, well, we have a position, it's vacant, but we're hoping to hire it, you know, at least within a month, a recycling coordinator, that, that is the role, is education and outreach. We reach out to all school levels, from elementary schools to college-level tours, where we bring them and we show them what, what goes into recycling and how we do that. We're also looking at updating our website. You know, we found a bunch of other municipalities that do recycling education very well, and mimic them, rather than recreate the wheel. So just ways of explaining to people, you know, what the process is, why we can't take certain plastics, and also, you know, the benefits of doing it, how it helps the environment, how it helps the county, and, you know, there's a host of good things that come with recycling, but getting it out there. And I think if you're just a county homeowner that has a pickup service, you know, right now, I, it's hard to put an incentive, incentive or enforcement on that sort of thing. You know, it's easier to just throw it in the green bin, roll it out to the curb, and go. So, yeah, I think education and outreach is our way to go, reach, reach the younger generations, and then also through our website and through great questions, such as what you're proposing, get out there and just explain, hey, if you recycle, the landfill will last longer. In some cases, depending on the product, the county makes some revenue, but the markets aren't, aren't that good right now.
Councilman Dodd.
I think Councilman Holloway was ahead of me.
Oh, it doesn't matter, but anyway.
Get that mic up.
I don't know if I asked this question before. On seppage, it's not accepted at any of our county faculties, facilities, and it's sent to outside, like the Princess Anne.
Yes.
What would happen if they would cut off haulers from Wycomico County? I mean, what, what backup plan do we have any? I mean, at one point in time, the fellows out here, you know, if we had a real wet year, it gets, they get really busy, and suddenly, where they're hauling it now, say, we can't accept it. What would we do?
I do think we touched on this briefly at the last council meeting, the work session, but it's, it's up to the treatment plants. They're the ones that, that take that in. The county public works is not in any position to take septicage, or wastewater for that matter. It would have to be the individual treatment plants, and can they handle that additional capacity? Can they handle, some cases, it's, it's the concentration.
But they don't, they don't take it, correct?
Yeah, they don't. So they would have to, or, and it may be an incentive for them to do it if, but, but I guess going to your original question, like if Princess Anne just said no, just like any waste, they'd have to see where is the next closest, and the cost to truck it would increase, you know, so forth.
So the cost to consumers and the county is pretty strictly, yeah.
Yeah, you're, exactly.
So we don't have, we don't have a backup?
We don't have a backup.
All right.
If, if we had treatment plants that, if, if the county owned a treatment plant, and we could talk about expanding it such that we could handle septicage, but right now, it is the individual municipalities have the, have those plants. So maybe a conversation with Salisbury or Fruitland could-
Do you recall why Salisbury quit, or were you here when that happened?
I, I do not. I could get the answer, though.
Yeah, that's fine. I remember it happening. I don't recall just exactly what. It's just a little concerning, because, you know, suddenly you're going to start getting phone calls, where these guys have nowhere to go.
Exactly. Well, it's the same as if we had, if the people who take our tires now just vanished. We, we would have tires built up, and it's like, how do we dispose of them at that point? We're not legally allowed to put them in the landfill, so where do we put them? And we'd have to truck them further and further away.
Speaking of the 30%, this, in that 30% is private industries figured into that 30%?
Yes.
So salvage yards and all?
That is correct. We send out flyers to the private businesses, and we also make considerations for the people that aggregate them. So if we have, I'll say Waste Management takes cardboard, well, Walmart may collect their cardboard, and we get the numbers from Walmart, but then we also get Waste Management's numbers. So if Walmart sends it to Waste Management, we're not double counting. So we try to know who's, who's sending what to what, and it changes, depending on who's, who's offering a, a better deal.
So our 30% will go up if the price of materials went up?
I think so. Yeah, it's, it's market-driven.
Councilman Dodd.
Yes, I think that Plan B might be a priority that we need to consider in the future, but on the other hand, I think you guys are doing a great job. I want to commend you and our staff. Is it 30 or 35%?
Right, right now, we're about 35%, but it fluctuates. Again, I think the, the brush is a big, big contributing factor, but we, we can pull, and if you would like, we can present how the recycling numbers, we have it broken down to each recycling center or convenience center. So we can say, you know, Mardella Springs, we're pulling this much versus Hebron versus Sharp Town, so.
Well, I think it's great, and everybody should be commended, but there's always room to do better, and-
Exactly.
I guess this is where I'm a little bit on the green side, which I don't know why I am, but I am. I go out of my way to throw a water bottle away, and not throw it away, but put it in a recycle bin.
Recycle.
But I would like to see more education, more PSAs, and has legislation ever been considered?
Not that I know of, and I think-
And then some jurisdictions require each citizen or each household to-
Yeah, in, in extreme situations, they, there are enforcement capabilities. Other, say, out west, they'll check the trash to see, do you have recyclables? And in some cases, they want you to pull out organic waste as well, and that goes to a composting area. I think going for the education and outreach before some sort of enforcement.
Well, I'm not advocating legislation.
But talking with the executive, we've had some ideas about trying to have smaller stations at homeowners associations, so reach out to an HOA and say, are you interested in participating? And sometimes it's a convenience thing. You know, we, right now, we'd spread ourselves thinner in terms, and we'd need to have the equipment to empty these smaller, smaller bins, but it's, it's a way of helping get that number up, and just offering more opportunities. Sometimes it's an opportunity thing.
Well, I know a lot of us are doing our part, and I'd just like to ask the citizens to get more involved and do their part. A lot of people are proactive in recycling.
Exactly.
So I'd like to see more people get involved.
No, the, our 30% and 35%, wherever we fall, is impressive, and it's mostly citizen-driven. The businesses do a great job, but, but the citizens are definitely the ones that are out at our recycling locations or convenience centers, and they're the ones bringing, bringing in their, their recyclables, and we appreciate that.
Yes, I notice them, and they are to be commended for that, and you are too, so thank you.
Thanks.
John.
I have one more concern, and that's the remaining life of the Newland, Newland Park landfill is approximately 23 years. 23 years sounds like a long time, and it is to some younger people, but it's, it's not really that long, and we tend to get behind on the needs that we have, and of course, a spoil site is a, is a good example, where, here we go, we're down to the end of the line, and we still haven't seen anything on spoil sites yet. But I'd, I'd like to see some initiatives on extending the life of the landfill and see them relatively soon. I think it's in the best interest of the public that we do attempt, because we know we can't open a metal one.
So with that, I mean, it is something we are considering, and the contractor, the consultant that we use at the Newland Park landfill is GeoSynTech out of Columbia, Maryland. They're involved with multiple landfills in Maryland and across the country. And some of the ideas we presented to them, like a shredder, and I think we talked about the shredder last time, they turned out and said, well, from a capital cost and a maintenance cost, that may, that's usually not a good idea, even though it would help with compaction and extending the life. You know, sort of incineration, the disposal of solid waste is tricky subject. If there was a, if there was a solution, everybody'd be using it, I would think. Incineration, you get air quality issues, and people don't necessarily, you know, want that in their backyard. There are various waste-to-energy alternatives. How many of those are commercially viable yet, we're not sure. It's one of those things, looking at the bigger counties, say, like Baltimore County or Montgomery County, what do they do? And can we do a, a, say, scalable option of that? Another option is partnering with the other counties and doing regional solutions. So, yeah, we have 23 years, but maybe Worcester has more space, and we strike some deal where we start using the different landfills, or have a central one. But then that, that negotiation, you know, is going to, going to take some time. So, yeah, 23 years is not, not a long time at all, and this 10-year plan sort of touches on what options we're thinking about. The following 10-year plan is going to really dive into that, hope so, because that's, that's where, that's where time's running out. So I do think, you know, a bigger conversation needs to be happening, and we need to see what's, what's politically acceptable as well.
The only question I had, question was, and I was surprised, in the list of apartments and condominiums on the recycling, there were no apartment complexes listed from Salisbury.
Yeah, yeah, and I noticed that as well. The state, how they regulate things is a little different. I would have to look specifically why the city's kind of cut out. They do the same with stormwater, where the city's under a separate permit. So it could be in their solid waste collection system that those apartments are getting counted somehow. But, yeah, it is something that, you know, they, they may fall under a different law, but I'll have to, I'll have to follow up on that.
Okay.
Weston, how, how does that 30 or 35% compare with the rest of the counties in Maryland?
We are generally higher than, say, Somerset, Worcester, Dorchester. As you start getting to the bigger counties that have more elaborate programs, or sometimes single stream, while it's extremely costly, they get larger numbers from that. It's more convenient to just throw everything in one, one bin and pull that, it goes back to a convenience thing, but then somebody has to pick through it. And then that, that can, the one in Baltimore County had 87 conveyors, and that's, that's a huge, huge cost, huge personnel standpoint, or inmates, if they're running it by inmates. So, yeah, compared to the, the surrounding counties, we're doing well. In the state, I'd say we're probably in the middle. But, yeah, we're, we're looking at opportunities to increase that number. And the, and the more we can divert from the waste stream and get to recycle or find another home for, like we did with the mattress, mattresses briefly, that, that extends the life of the landfill, that raises our recycling number, so, you know, something that I say weekly, if not daily, we're talking about coming up with another idea, and the recycling coordinator position is somebody who, who sort of focuses on that as part of their duties.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 156, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried, resolution passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon, before Mr. Young leaves, the 31st is something coming up. It would be a good time to publicize that.
So, yes, the weekend of the 31st is our rescheduled Household Hazardous Waste Day. We originally had it scheduled on a Saturday, where we had the nor'easter and Hurricane Jocelyn coming in, and we pushed it back to the 31st. Thank you for mentioning that. So that's, that's where Wycomico County residents can bring household hazardous waste. And if you go to our website and look at the flyer, you can see what that, what that includes. Industrial pesticides, say, from farming applications, there's a separate disposal for that. But, yeah, if there's any, really, if there's any question in terms of where can we dispose of something, that's where, if you call the Solid Waste Division, we'll be able to answer that and point you in the right direction. Sometimes it's hold on to it till we have the Household Hazardous Waste Day, and we'll, we'll collect it then.
Is that free, or is it-
That is free. That is free.
And it's just that day?
Yeah, just that day.
Okay.
A lot of these programs are tied with the state, so they, they assist each county with having one of these days, and then they will take the products.
A couple of years ago, the Farm Bureau did a program with anybody that was a member of the Farm Bureau, paid to have tires taken to, is there anything in the wind about that?
I've, I've heard of a tire amnesty day, I think agricultural or commercial tire amnesty day coming up, but I'm, I'm not positive of when that date was. Yeah, we're usually tied, and we'll try to get a press release out, just so we can alert the businesses or agriculture. It all depends, again, this is typically a state-financed program, and they let us know what, what dates suit them, and then we just, we, we coordinate, we work with the state in terms of providing that.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
Next item for council's consideration is Resolution Number 157, 2015, at the request of the county executive declaring that Becker Morgan, located at 312 West Main Street, Salisbury, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits. You look back through the application material, you will find that Becker Morgan meets the requirements by means of their having hired seven additional employees, and those seven employees were hired between August of 2014 and- between August of 2014 and June of 2015. You see these numbers, or you see the, you see applications for Enterprise Zones credits, and it's often one, two, three employees. I don't think any, I don't think, I don't think any of the ones that you've seen this year have been as high as seven.
Entertained a motion, accept Resolution 157, 2015. So moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion, questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post, motions carried, resolution passes.
Thank you, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Roser?
Yes, Mr. President, with your permission, I will serve my comments for later in the meeting.
Thank you very much. Morning, Ms. Harris, how are you?
Good morning. We have a legislative bill, 2015-15, for introduction, an act to amend the Wycomico County Personnel Manual, Chapter 15, entitled Leave Benefits and Holidays, to add Section 1517, entitled Mentoring Leave, allowing county employees to use leave to participate in the Wycomico County Board of Education mentoring project.
Entertained a motion from council to introduce Legislative Bill 2015-15.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. The executives here and where else you may choose.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay.
Good program.
Well, we've worked, I think we've got all the problems aired out that you had or questions. Is there any questions we can have? Mr. Ennis is here with us to answer our things.
Council questions?
What interest have you seen from employees on this?
We really haven't surveyed employees because it is a legislative bill, so we've had inquiries, but we don't have a count as of yet.
And what, I guess, what do we have to guarantee that this is actually taking place? So, we know that they're just not taking time off and-
We have, they have an application process, and we've received the applications that gave, it gives the options of what school they're at and what timeframe. So, once we receive back the approved application, then we're able to verify and load up the leave.
So, we can follow up with the school that, you know, they actually showed up?
Mr. Thompson, you know, is aware of that, so we can just make sure all of our mentors do go where they're supposed to go and that type of thing.
The only question I had was, it states that they are allowed to have up to 35 hours leave-
Per year.
Per year. But if, in trying to maybe do the math on the time period, if you try to include travel and figure it's maybe, because there'll be 45 minutes with a student, maybe it's like an hour and a half total time, that, that could come out to possibly around 70, 70 hours because of the number of months, the 10-month program. So, what would we do if the, if the program probably requires 70 hours for the full term, and we're only allowing for 35?
35 hours is a standard policy used by other governments, and this leave will be administered along with other leaves. So, certain travel time, if you're in a morning program, you're going to be on your own time. It's not going to be over and above your work schedule. So, it's pretty reasonable to, especially if you get a location that is only five, 10 minutes away from your work location, or a few minutes away from your house. So, it's easily managed, I guess, with an hour, one hour per week.
So, you're saying if it goes over 35 hours, and the employee wants to continue to be in the mentoring program, that would come off of their, their pay?
Yeah, their own time.
Their own time.
Or your lunch break. It's pretty standard.
What's standard?
That's pretty standard in the mentoring leave policies that we pulled from other government.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all is in favor of introducing Legislative Bill 2015-15, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried, introduction of bill passes. Thank you. This time we'll enter into public comments. President Ashanti.
Good morning. My name is Mary Ashanti. I'm president of Wycomico County NAACP. To President Cannon, county council members and all those assembled, good morning. My comments is, is reference to the method of selection of Board of Education members. And I just have some questions, and I know that you may not can, can answer them. But will there be a work session with inclusion of the various stakeholder groups, like the County Teachers Association, the Democratic and Republican Central Committee, our clubs, business organization, NAACP, and I believe there's a group called Wycomico we decide to discuss the wording of the referendum. We would like to see a win-win situation, so I'm just wondering, is the day-
We're working on that now. We're going to have a work session this afternoon, and then we're also working on seeing how we can integrate the stakeholders as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments?
I guess I'm first again.
Councilman Doug?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank everyone for attending again. It's always good to see a good turnout, especially during the day. Happy birthday to Bob Culver. Didn't know it was your birthday today, so I hope you have fun. I see you're working. The, the other day, I was reading an article in the paper. I know it's getting colder, and it was, I think it was in Virginia, and some family members died of carbon dioxide poison. I know it's getting colder out there, and people are starting to use different sources of heat, so I'd like everybody to be careful, maybe get a carbon dioxide detector, because that's a silent killer, and if you don't know, if you can't smell it, it's, it can be deadly, and we've lost people locally, so please be careful with your heating sources. Attended the Chamber of Commerce luncheon the other day, and county executive Bob Culver spoke on the state of the county. I think he did a good job, and he commended the department heads, and I think he did a good job with that, and he rightfully so, commending our employees. The elected school board hearing, it was a good turnout, a lot of good, things were said. It looks like a lot of people really are interested in the elected school board, so we'll see how that goes. Like the council president said, we are going to have a hearing, or not a hearing, a work sessions today, so that would be interesting. Attended the NAACP City Council Forum right after that, and it was a good turnout, a lot of good people there, and some interesting things were said, and it looks like a lot of good candidates, so good luck to the candidates for the city of Salisbury election that's coming up. That's all I have.
Any other council comments?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Hallway?
This is just purely a comment that I'm a little bit baffled by the lack of interest by the environmental community in the solid waste management plan, if they are so willing to go name the trees in the forest at Henry Parker, and, you know, where we're going to put a grass field over top of land. And here we are planning for the next 20, 30 years of burying our trash in a hole in the ground and not a peat room. It's very, very disappointing in the environmental community.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hallway? Any other counsel, Councilman Hallway?
I had the pleasure Saturday night of going to Delmar Fire Department, presenting a couple of proclamations. One to Mr. Jack Morris for 50-plus years of being a firefighter, and the other one to the ladies auxiliary. And Delmar is an interesting little town, you know, two states there, but they really come together. And if I was sitting at one of the tables, and I'm sorry I didn't go to the football game the night before in Delmar because that seemed to be the topic of the conversation, but I just want to thank those folks and all the firefighters and the ladies auxiliaries for all they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hallway. Any other comments? And presidential comments, just to bring you up to date with what's, what Wycomico County has been doing since the council last met two weeks ago, it's been very busy. Attended an interesting ribbon cutting where they don't actually, it wasn't actually a ribbon, it was a steel beam, and they cut it with a torch. This was an event that was celebrating at Toroid, where they are now training welders through a state grant. This is a local initiative, which I, I think, you know, the Chamber of Commerce helped to put forth, as well as Katerina Enderfeld with Toroid, and there were, I think, at least 160 people who applied for these positions. And I believe the class is of maybe 12 welders, and I know my numbers are probably off, but it's close, within that range. That was the need there, that was the demand, and it was done through a state grant. So, you're talking about economic development. This was specifically on-the-ground economic development. I'd like to thank Katerina and the chamber for moving that forward. I actually, you know, when you, when you find out this firsthand, someone came to the office the other day. They, I don't usually talk about personal business affairs, but they actually came to rent a house, and I asked him about his employment, and the gentleman said, well, I'm training for, you know, welding at this. So, here was a, a one-on-one experience where economic development was like knocking on the front door, saying it works. So, I'd like to thank them for all their effort. I had a beer festival, as you know, in the last couple of weeks. Went very well. The wine festival, I don't even know if they had enough room for parking for the wine festival. It was that good. And hands off to Recreation Parks and Tourism for the great work that they're doing. Attended the Wycomico County Education, Board of Education Superintendent's search. It was held at Bennett High School. I was absolutely amazed, and so was the, the search group that was, that's been brought in as to how many of our Eastern Shore delegates were there. You know, we had Carl Anderton was there, Mary Beth Croze was there, Senator Mathias was there, and I may, I didn't want to start down that route because I might leave somebody out. But the attendance was phenomenal as far as the representation, even state-level, with interest in what's happening in Wycomico County. Outside of that, Sheriff Lewis was part of a law enforcement forum that was held at Salisbury University last night, and it was very well done, very well presented. It was in the paper today. I'd like to thank Sheriff Lewis, of course, for representing Wycomico County at that forum. So, that being said, brought you up to date with everything I know. Like to entertain a motion from council to adjourn so that we may go into a closed session, followed by an open session, and at which time we will then reconvene in legislative session. Mr. Kramer?
Mr. President, would it be more convenient for the public who may wish to participate in the, or listen to the open sessions, to switch that order and have the closed sessions last?
I misspoke. I misspoke. Entertained a motion to adjourn so that we may go into an open session. You'll understand why I misspoke. To adjourn so that we can go into an open session, followed by a closed session, to be followed by an open session, and then to be reconvened as a legislative session. Thank you, Ms. Kramer.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody understood? No questions?
Good job.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Post, motions carried, meetings adjourned. Thank you. First item on the agenda for the open work session for October 20th, 2015, is hunting rights on the county-owned property. Pam Olin, Acting Director of Recreation, Parks and Tourism, Weston Young, Director of Public Works.
Good afternoon.
We do have the information.
Sorry. Good morning.
Good morning, yeah. We do have the information, if you'd like to just give us an overview.
Yes, we were approached by Bill McCain to, at the Wreckin' Parks, when Andy Whisk was acting director, was approached by Bill McCain about hunting rights next to Pemberton Park. He owns hunting rights right next to the prop, to the property on the bounds property. You have been given a map, and it has an X kind of marking where his spot is. He is looking for basically a hunting rights swap, such that the county would swap our hunting rights on a piece of property that's adjacent to his with his rights. Based on state regulation, we can't bid out the hunting rights. Based on the people who have already gotten hunting rights in the area, there isn't enough distance between the other blinds to bid out those rights. So, either our property would stay vacant, which we have every right to do, or we have the opportunity to swap rights with Mr. McCain. The advantages to swapping the rights are that it moves his hunting further away from Pemberton Park, which you can actually see Pemberton Park trails from where he is allowed to hunt. And so, we have the public walking around in the park on days that he can be hunting. And so, what this does is it moves him back into sort of a cove away from the park. You can't see the park from that location. It would be a very difficult possibility to have any kind of injury to anyone or the park property. And so, all we're asking for the council is the ability to create an MOU where he would maintain his rights on the bounds property, but then we would give him the rights to hunt. If he gives up his bounds property rights, then he gives up the, the right to hunt on our property.
Any questions?
There's no lines on that property, is there?
Lines?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. If there are, it would be very interesting to see a picture.
Okay, we don't want any, anything going on like this.
I, I've seen Mr. McCain hunt. It would be very good to move us far away from Pemberton Park.
I'm not going to respond to that.
He used to be associated with the Big Chaney Hunting Club. Any, any questions?
Sounds like you all got it figured out.
Yep.
I mean, we're, again, we're looking to work with legal to create a very simple MOU that would require swap.
Okay, so it's, it's nothing that really is going to come before council as a resolution or anything?
No.
So, you need council consensus on an MOU?
Correct. That's all we're asking is, is so that then it would go through legal channels and then be signed by the executive.
Okay.
How long does Mr. McCain have rights to hunt on the bounds property? I mean, are we talking about at least until Mr. McCain passes away? I mean, I mean, you know, how long are we looking at this sort of situation?
It's renewed annually, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's not a definite-
Mr. McCain, would you go to the microphone, please?
Yeah, as long as I just keep-
Can't hear you, Bill. You're gonna have, you're gonna have to put your face on camera.
It's renewed annually with the, the family that owns the property, so, you know, basically as long as, you know, we agree with each other and so forth, it would continue.
How long have you been there?
Um, well, several years. The actual rights with the family formally has only been in the last couple of years. But prior to that, actually, I used to actually live at Pemberton as the caretaker, and actually used to hunt the property even back then. So, actually, this, this piece was sort of a, the county didn't know they owned it. All it is is actually old, it's a, it's from dredged material from 50 or 60 years ago. It kind of created, like, and actually, it's just where, back then, they just piled it. They just kind of dug it up and piled it next to the river, so.
Any other questions?
Um, is it, is there easy access where I can go look at it to see what the spoil did? Where you said it built up?
Yeah, you almost have to do it from like, you know, with a boat or something. You can't walk to it.
Okay. Other than the Pemberton Park issue, what other benefit is it to give us the bounds property or swap the bounds property?
It really, the, the main benefit is to the public and the safety of the public that is walking. And so, that is the benefit.
Okay. I, I had a hunter ask me this morning before the meeting, why wasn't the property put out for bid?
And the reason is, is there's not enough space between his location and the other locations that already on your map, that are, those Xs on your map are already registered locations. And so, unless one of those sites give up their rights, which none of them are planning to do at the moment, there isn't a piece of land that we could bid out.
They have to be 250 yards apart. So, that's what Pam is saying, is that if you go 250 yards from any of those locations, there, there isn't a spot.
That sounds good.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, by consensus of moving forward with a memo of understanding, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motions carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be careful.
Have a good-
Thank you. Next on the open work session agenda, Legislative Bill 2015-14. Bob, you've got people here? Bob, you've got people here. I'm assuming we're, we're going to discuss the, trying to extend the moratorium on the impact fee.
We're going to get to that again.
Okay.
There you go.
Jack, how did you do that?
Yeah.
I'm always in the process.
Yes, please, yeah. Yeah, we're ready. Hi, Jack.
Hey, good morning.
Just to tell the public who you are.
Oh, thank you. Jack Lennox, Director of Planning and Development. Thank you.
Where do you want to start?
Well, as you know, we brought this to you some time ago, in hopes of continuing this moratorium. We've had such good luck out of that, and what we've done, and we would like to continue that on. And last year, if you remember what we did, part of the economic development fee that was in the Economic Development Center, that was giving us a grant. This year, we, you all went to a moratorium, and it's worked out very well. Jack has got the numbers for you here. But we would like to continue the moratorium on single-family housing costs of that. It'll actually cost the board what we've done with.
Yeah.
So, to encourage all building to come back in Salisbury. Like I say, Jack's got the figures for you, to show you how beneficial it has been to Wycomica County.
Great, thank you. It's, as you know, it's a little difficult to isolate very specifically cause and effect. You'll see a lot of numbers out there, and we can attribute it to state regulation, local regulation fees, the economy, and I'll leave it, of course, to you folks to decide what you think from a policy standpoint is the, is the most significant. But the easiest way to approach this is to recognize that going into FY '15, we had had a projection of 74 single-family homes. That is something based, not just clearly on a straight-line projection, but real life, trying to anticipate what's out there, what we've done in the few years previous. When you had the impact fee grant system set up, you took that 74 and hit it in the first half of the year. So basically, by last January 1st, you had taken in all those applications. Allow me to avoid for a moment the delay that occurs sometimes, the lag between an application and a permit. And that gets tricky. Because generally, it's the application date that locks you into a certain building code, or a certain fee schedule, or in case of the grant, to the grant application. So, some folks sort of hurried in at the end to qualify for that, and you won't see the permit issued till later. So, the lag issue aside for a moment, we took down an entire year's estimate of building permits, we're talking single-family now. And that's in the cities and towns, and on incorporated county, because it supplies county-wide. So it's not just what's issued by my, by my office. Took down those 74 within the first half of the year. When we got to the spring, and obviously there aren't too many building permits being pulled generally in January, February, March, when you enacted the building permit moratorium in April, respectively, for six months, total number of permits issued since April is 67. Total number of applications, and this is perhaps key, after April, was 82. Now, if I sat here and told you that that's because of the impact fee moratorium, you might very rationally come back and say, "Well, didn't something significant happen on July 1st?" And we know that it did, and that's, and that's the state requirement for sprinkler, fire suppression systems on single-family, on all homes. So if you had built prior to this, a single-family in Salisbury or Fruitland, you would have been required to have a sprinkler anyways. Out in the county, that's a new requirement. We had about 60 applications in June. And for one of the first times, we had builders coming in saying, "Take your time with these." So, individuals building their own homes generally don't, you know, they don't do it, you know, on speculation. So, those we process right away. The others are kind of sitting there in that lag. We expect, we interpret the application period to have locked them in to that. That's always the way we've done it, in short of some other direction from the council and executive, we'll continue to do that. So we've got those applications in the box from, from June. We've done some, and there's speculation about value, but we had given you some numbers back, I believe around the first of the year, based on average costs from last year, average construction costs, which we're trying to correlate somehow to assessed value, and that's on structures, not on land. You hit an average of about 140, a little over 147,000 per home. So, rough math, number of applications since the moratorium went into effect, works out to an assessed value of a little over $12 million. Those will come in over the next number of months. We have had significantly one application since July 1st. One application for a single-family home. Replacements are not subject to impact fee, ever. So moratorium's not an issue. And, you know, folks, we do encourage homes, replacement homes. They are subject to sprinklers, though. So we suspect that even on replacements, some applications in June, you know, related to that, but we've had one, and by the way, they, they applied, and they pulled a permit, and it's under construction. So that was an individual, that wasn't a professional builder. We always knew that the sprinkler system was going to be a greater incentive than the impact fee, but we are still presenting that as an option for, for the builders, but, so we've had one that's applied specifically after July 1st.
Yes.
Yeah. And that was not speculation, that was not a builder, that was a private home builder in Nittschild.
On the ones that applied in June, do they have, I can't remember, was there a timeframe we set up, where as we said, if they did not follow through and actually build, was that a year where we gave them that time, that period where they had to actually execute?
The time period that you specified had to do with the grant period. And those, and those all, basically all complied. I think one person in the end probably gave back their permit. So essentially, everybody that applied, because you did have that time period.
Right.
They had to build, they had to get in the ground, they had to finish.
But the moratorium does not have a time period?
No, it does not. And if I could just for, just to keep something in the back of your mind, if you were to decide not to extend the moratorium, please keep in mind that the folks who have already applied, when they pulled a permit, will have to pay that fee.
But they didn't know they would have to.
When they, when they applied, they didn't have to pay the fee. If you choose not to extend the moratorium, they will. So whatever you and your good judgment decide to do, just, just keep that in mind, that there are those folks kind of caught in the middle.
It's somewhat ironic, it almost seems as if you lose the incentive if you extend the offer. You know? It's ironic.
Sure, and also that everyone that applied is not looking to build.
Right.
So that'll, we'll have to keep an eye on that list, too. There's a number of builders who have taken a chunk of them down.
Sure.
Play the devil's advocate here a little bit. So we've got these permits sitting in a file, basically been asked not to be in any hurry on them, and we know the builder's not now. If a builder is building a home for rental, and he's going to be renting this home, and in the future, say a year or two after he gets it built, without a sprinkler system, even though there was a law for sprinkler systems, but he had pulled the permits prior, and there's a fire, and there's a loss of life, would the county be liable? Any chance?
We're following the state law.
Okay.
Councilman Dug?
Yes, sir. You threw out a lot of numbers, and the 12 million assessed value sounds good. Because of the sprinkler code, July 1st, only one application and permit has been pulled because of the sprinkler system. And that just goes to show you that, that's an enormous amount of money, and somebody's going to have to pay in addition to these hookup fees, and buying a pump, other than running the sprinkler system, so...
We also have mandatory BAT systems now in all septics. So between the septics, the impact fee, and you consider the sprinkler system, you're probably paying closer to $25,000 to start a house in Wycomica County.
And that's not good incentive.
No. And we've talked to several of our delegation, and they all, I was assured by Delegate Adams, that they are going to put some kind of legislation forth in this year's session regarding rural counties and the sprinkler system. I know Senator Mathias, and we disagree on that, but most of the delegates are understanding what our problems are.
Carillon County has really, really been active.
Strong leader in this, yes.
Have we had, previous to this, we had a waiver for the sprinkler system.
We had found, through the help of Worcester County and Sunny Blocks, and we found a, call it a loophole, call it whatever we want, we did not have to enforce it until July of '15, July 1st, '15.
And we can't get a waiver now?
We've extended it, good luck.
Tough.
So, within this moratorium, are we going to see something from the executive's office to have a permanent resolution with the impact fee issue?
Well, I personally would like to, yes, I really do. My, my thought was, and why we've gone on and asked for this moratorium, is if we'd gone on and asked for us to have a public hearings and everything else, we would not have made it. As of October 23rd, it ceases. So it expires from what we had done. So, kind of probably should have gotten this back a little bit further, but we didn't get it. So that's why we're asking for the extensions of the moratorium, so we've got enough time, and you have enough time to have your public hearings, and everybody can listen to the public on what their thoughts are.
Any questions?
One more question, and I was reading in here about when it goes into effect, there's a 60-day delay, so we're not going to be able to pull permits for those 60 days?
With a moratorium, we can, right now.
Okay.
And we can still pull for that.
I believe, I'll defer to council, I believe it's immediate.
Okay.
The moratorium, we can continue to go ahead and pull our permits, if we're lucky enough to get any. If it were to go to a legislative where we struck the law, that would be a 60-day wait period, and that's why I've asked for the moratorium, so we can get the 60 days in.
Right, and that's what I was concerned about.
If we miss by a couple of days, by the way, believe me, we won't let anyone inadvertently pay the fee.
Okay.
Jack, if, with the sprinkler system cost, and you, and you said it was a private homeowner that came in and applied? I guess, you know, people being inexperienced in the building business, you know, a homeowner, when they come in and apply, are they informed of everything they have to go through before they buy the permits?
We, we try to. They were, they were certainly informed at this point, and the gentleman was interested in continuing, and so he did.
So there's no, no surprises, I guess, is what I'm asking, you know, when they come in and buy the permits, and suddenly they find out, you know?
I won't say that, that folks are always fully informed, but when they come in, we try to give them as much, you know, factual advice as we can. The logical question is, you know, what is this going to cost me? And is, I understand through our fire safety folks, there's a lot of, there's a lot of change taking place in that industry now that statewide, that requirement is in effect. So there are those looking to get into a new business, to expand their business, and we're hoping that's going to help bring down some of the costs.
Yeah, it probably will, yeah.
Any other questions? Hi, John. Thank you very much. Hey, next item on the agenda, if you spoke too soon. Next item on the agenda, we're going to discuss the method of selecting a school board. As we know, we've had four public hearings to get public input, and documented everybody's input. At this time, I would open the floor for discussion among the council, as far as how we'd like to sift through this, and, you know, come to a conclusion on what we think the best options might be, based on that input. So, Mr. Kilmer, you want me to start with you, as far as?
I guess, I may, instigate it, is that best?
The most knowledgeable.
Well, I think, I prefer that over the other comment. I guess from information received from Delegate Anderton's office, it'd be good if we had something to Annapolis before November 16th, so they can get it pre-filled early, then we can get the process started early. We were kind of late last time, and there's some issues there. But, very strongly, that people want an either fully-elected school board, or a hybrid school board. Dr. Basheart's in the audience, and he's done a lot of work on what a hybrid school board might look like, and they seem very, like some good ideas. And I understand there's also interest in still retaining some members of the community, an appointed board. I mean, a referendum is usually a yes or no vote on one proposal, and if you vote no, you keep the status quo, which would be the appointed board, as it exists now. So, I guess we need to figure out what, what do we do? There's three options, and I don't know if that referendum can really have three options. We've received some sort of conflicting advice about the legality of that, so, I'm, does anybody have any ideas about what would be the best way to go?
I was, I had a conversation with Delegate Anderton Saturday night, when I was in Delmore, and he informed me that, as far as elected school boards, he don't think there had ever been a three-option vote forward, and his concern was that could lead to some sort of lawsuit, due to the fact that it had never been done that way. So I think that we should have an up or down vote, either for an elected school board, or not for an elected school board. Keep it simple. I don't think, I'm full, I'm in favor of fully. I don't know that that would necessarily satisfy everybody in Annapolis, an appointed, a hybrid with, two appointed, five elected, I think would satisfy a lot more people, and I'm okay with that. The other thing that I really am concerned about is someone that's, that's deriving their income through either working or retirement on the school board, being on the school board, is my understanding. A few years ago, we had a school board member that actually voted for an increase in his pension while serving on the school board. I think something, sort of like what we do on the county council, we've tried to mirror this after the council, as much as, you know, as council elections as we can, somewhere along the line, that needs to be in there, that nobody can serve on the school board that is deriving their income, either through working or through retirement from the school
Councilman Dug?
Just a question, with your discussion there, Councilman Holloway, did you get any information concerning who can sit on a board? Can that be an option?
Who can sit on a board?
Or cannot serve on the board, like a previous employee? I think that's where you were going with that.
Well, I didn't get any information, other than the fact, you're talking about the statement I made about somebody voting for their in?
Right, and I think you were mentioning that somebody like that should not serve on the board.
That's correct.
Did you get any information whether that was legal or not?
Well, it's the way it is on the county council. I mean, you can't work for the county and be on, and be on the county council.
But I think that part of the charter is currently working for the county.
Yeah.
But I know you have a good point there, but I was wondering if you found out whether that was legal or not.
That's something we need to find out.
Right, and I agree with you, I think it's something that we should do, is keep it simple. If we don't have much time to discuss now, we need to get up to Annapolis by the 16th, because we only have one more meeting. But the up or down vote, I think I like that idea, because that is simple. But we need to keep in mind, whatever we do, somebody's going to be offended.
We're still waiting for clarification on that as well. Initially, the Board of Elections had said that they could handle having three on the ballot.
Okay.
She said mechanically. And then she also said, because I said, "Well, what about legally?" And her comment was, "Well, whatever you put in the bill, if passed, would be law." I don't know who would be challenging it, or I don't understand what party would want to challenge it. But she said that if you put that in the bill, and the legislature passes it, then that's law, and that could be acceptable. We're waiting for a confirmation also on that specific, as to whether or not that can definitely be achieved. What I would say is that we all, we're all too familiar with what the options are, but I'd like maybe the council to consider how we would want to narrow it down. We know there's an appointment process that's in effect. There's also an elected and a hybrid. Now, under the elected, the two options were five elected, only five, or seven. Any opinions on which way we would go? Because we have to, we're going to sort of narrow this down. My opinion is that seven was probably more acceptable than five in the elected process. Anyone else's opinion?
Mr. President, I have a question. If the council is, has a general feeling that they only want to go up and down with either the option of elected or an appointed, is it necessary to go through this exercise now?
Well, if the council were to decide that we wanted to have elected on the ballot, we'd still have to know whether it's five or seven.
Well, we can go through that exercise now, or we can go through it after the state passes it.
I'm not saying that we're only going to, I'm not limiting us to what we choose. I'm just saying that.
And I'm saying that if we go with option one, which is up and down on, and request from the state to have either elected or appointed, after the decisions made by the state, that puts the onus on us to decide whether it's a hybrid or whether it's fully elected, correct?
No, go ahead, Mark.
I mean, generally, the way, Caroline County, the way they did it in 2010 was, the state passed legislation saying Caroline County will have a hybrid school board with these various aspects. I mean, the state passed legislation to change the school board, and then said that if the voters in Caroline County approve that via referendum, that will go into effect. And if they rejected it, then they would stay with the full.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm saying that if we submit to the state that we want an appointed and an elected, and that goes on, or elected, that goes on the ballot, and it comes back that the elected get the majority of the vote when it's on the ballot, and we still have the option of doing a hybrid or a fully elected.
Are you talking about a straw poll?
Straw poll.
So you, okay, so there's a straw poll, or there's a by-and-in referendum?
Correct.
So.
And I'm talking about a straw poll.
All right, well, that's, okay.
And if we have a straw poll, then it comes back to the council to make a decision whether we get fully elected or whether we get a hybrid, correct?
It does, but I don't think the council ever intended to be a straw poll. We're trying to get this to referendum. That's, I think it's been the initiative all along.
And if the state says we can't have three, then we take the right of the voter away who wants the appointed. And we did have opposition, and.
No, appointed will always be an option, John. Appointed will always be an option. Even if, even if on the ballot it simply said hybrid, it would be for or against hybrid. If you're for a hybrid, you're against appointed.
Right, but you've eliminated a full elective then.
Right, well, that's what we're trying to decide here, whether or not we're going to put elected and hybrid on there with appointed, or whether we're just simply going to go with the choice of the voter to decide on a hybrid, for or against, which would mean they either stay with appointed or a hybrid, or else elected and appointed. Those are what we're trying to do, but what I'm attempting to do right now is narrow down what options of the options we need to reduce. Again, if we were to decide and descend to the General Assembly, the option of just elected, what are we going to do? Are we going to do five, or are we going to do seven? We need to make that decision now. Based on, you know, and I'm trying to narrow, we're going to narrow down the options on elected as well as hybrid.
Okay.
So, and hopefully the exercise won't be that long.
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
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 Yeah, I think that was the common. So if it were to be elected going to Annapolis, then it would be seven elected, the option. Now, okay, on the hybrid, here's the tricky part here. We all know that the hybrid's five elected and two appointed. Decision that we need to consider is based on whether those two appointed would be appointed by a governor, whether they would be appointed by the executive with concurrence of the county council, or whether they would be appointed through a commission.
Why don't we do one by the county executive and one by the governor?
And it's four.
Okay, we now have four options.
Well, I mean, we've had, we've had some opposition to the county executives. And we've also heard opposition about the governors.
But that was very little.
If, if, I would need to fill a monkey wrench in here, plan here, but.
You did.
I mean, has anyone opposed to the nominated commission?
I'm in.
I like the nomination.
Don't get complicated.
I like the idea of keeping it simple. I don't mind that, but I don't think that's what the majority that spoke about a hybrid, I don't think that's what they asked for. I know there were some good points on it.
Whoever's doing the appointments wants a commission, let them do that. If they want a committee, if whoever, if the county executive does the appointments for the hybrid, if he wants to do a committee to help him do the selection, let him do that. If he wants to just do it on his own, rather do it on his own.
Oh, we need to make it. So you're making it complicated.
It would be nice to have a county executive sign anything, too.
Can I just suggest, as county executive now, I would rather see you all as the council for two nominees if you decide to go hybrid. You've got to realize the county executive not only works very closely with the Board of Education and decision-making, so it feeds itself to stacking the board.
Last proposal that went out to the council members, and they may not have had time to read it, Bob, would be to go on a commission, on the, reference to the commission process, the commission would send recommendations to your office, four recommendations for two positions, and then I believe two recommendations for the student, is that correct, or? But anyway, it would be, more, more, more names would be recommended to you. You, in turn, could go back to the commission, say, on these four, I don't like this fourth one, give me somebody else. And then they would eventually give you four that you were satisfied with. Those four then could come to the county council, and we could even do it through a public hearing process, and make that final decision as to which four would be the two. So.
I'm just giving, from my side of view, I like the seven members elected, but from that point on.
But this is a circumstance similar to what you had just suggested, whereas the council would have a greater role in finalizing the applicants.
There's seven members here, and, you know, I think that would be a more diverse selection of the nominee.
Right.
So than just, rather than going just.
Right.
Coming through a commission?
Yes.
You had asked before to cut to the chase.
Commission.
Mark?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's, well, Bob, can I describe? I mean, that, that, so how are we, how are we going to, do we appoint the commission? The county council appoints the commission?
It's done, it's done through a committee. The breakdown, it's from a large, diverse group of individuals in the community who are, who are assigned the task.
Who appoints the commission now? The county council or the county executive?
See, this is where I'm saying it's getting complicated. It's all in writing.
Yeah, well, I mean, Anarundel and Baltimore County do it this way, and so there's some precedent for, it is complicated, I agree, but we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. And I think what happens is, like, let's say the NAACP has a seat, and the Chamber of Commerce has a seat on the commission, so they forward a name to the executive, and the executive then makes that appointment. I think it's stakeholder organizations, and we can decide what stakeholder organizations are there. I mean, Harry Basehart had some ideas, and other people chimed in, but, you know, Bunky Lufman from Delmar said that Delmar should be represented because of their unique situation with the by-state agreement, so.
Okay, well, I'm, I've been wanting to say elected school board for a long time, so I'm going to be really flexible here, and anything you all want to do is fine with me, I'll go along with it, just so we can get it through. Pretty much so, anyway.
Ernie?
Nominee.
Commission?
Well, if Joe's flexible, I guess I'll have to be flexible, but I want the public to be happy, whatever they want, that's what I want. And the commission is the simplest way.
All right, so if it's, if we choose hybrid, the hybrid will be through commission?
But that would be option two out of the three choices, right?
The three choices would be appointed, elected, or now commission through, I mean, excuse me, hybrid with a commission.
Right, that would be choice number two.
Choice number three.
Well, appointed would be one of the choices.
Two alternatives, two options, yeah, two alternates, yes. Okay, well, then, that's, that's, that's very good, I mean, that's.
Are we getting somewhere?
Yeah, we really are. And I think the majority of people that spoke that were in favor of commission, I mean, of a hybrid, said they did want a commission, so that's good there. The other thing we're going to have to do is decide amongst ourselves, and I think we're at a stopping point until we can get more confirmation, and I really wish we had this confirmation earlier, but we've sort of in the timeframe, it was premature to approach anyone on reviewing the options until we finish the public hearings. And we only just finished the public hearings, so it's been a very narrow window. I think it would be beneficial to have some input as to legally where we might stand. There's no sense in us coming to any conclusion that we want to have three options on the ballot, if that's never going to fly. You know, at that point in time, life gets very simple, because then all we have to do is to figure out how we're going to establish a yes/no vote, and whether that yes/no vote is going to be yes or no, we want an elected board, or yes or no, we want a hybrid board, and that's it. I can't see it getting any more complicated.
Did that question go to the Attorney General, or?
It didn't go to the Attorney General. I sent it to Jim Mathias's office, because he'd asked to be, he'd asked to be part of that process, and we've been working through since the last time this went up. And he's, he's the one that actually had the, the head of the Board of Elections, the State Board of Elections, contact me in reference to the initial opinion. But I've asked him to be more specific on that, because we definitely want to make sure that we're going in the right direction, no matter what we choose.
So we've had four hearings, I think we've done everything we've been asked. We've listened to the people, and there should be no reason that a legislator would say no. So this should be able to move forward easily.
Initially, as it's been, as it was told to us after the last time around, if we had the public hearings as, as was requested.
So it sounds like we've covered all of our bases.
Right. President Shawnee? Yes?
Mary Ashanti in HCP. I've communicated with the other organizations, and two choices instead of three on the referendum is acceptable.
Okay.
Okay.
The hybrid with two appointed, and with the commission, and they're all elected.
Okay.
So leave a point all.
Now, if we have on the ballot elected or hybrid?
That's what she's saying.
Right, you just have two, the two choices, it should not be a problem with the two choices, they're all elected, or the hybrid, which would be five elected and two appointed.
With a commission.
With a commission.
Okay, now, Mark, you had referenced before that it would be a yes or no vote on maybe a hybrid, or a yes/no vote on elected. If we, if we initiate a hybrid and elected on the ballot, is that the three process since appointed is in the background somewhere?
I mean, that, that's not how referendums are usually done, but if Senator Mathias can get us some legal advice that says that's okay, then, I mean, if we can, if we can make that legal, then that's, yeah.
I, instead of, if I, if I voted for one, that automatically means that I don't vote for the other, so it has the same premise as a yes or no vote.
And that's.
It has the same premise.
Yes, and that's okay with everyone, all the stakeholders that you discussed with.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Mary, thank you for that.
Well, and, and, Mr. President, I mean, we've kind of agreed on a rough outline, and I mean, I'm not, I know Mrs. Ashanti talked about having a, another stakeholder meeting. In the interest of time, could we possibly email the stakeholders our ideas and?
She's not asking for a stakeholder meeting.
Okay, okay, okay.
You say we do not? Okay, all right.
All right. All right, I mean, do you want to just seek the legal advice and go from there?
I think, I think we seek legal advice and try to fashion the referendum to be as suggested by President Shawnee, elected and hybrid on the ballot. Is that acceptable?
I think that's simple enough.
We also need to put the question in there about employment.
Yeah, Joe, thanks, yeah. There's that issue as well. Another point, thanks, because there are other issues, there's the student representative, but I think we can work on that rather simply. The other issue is pay. Now, I don't know whether it's up to the county council to establish any type of a pay structure in the legislative bill, or if that's something that needs to come later. Rachel, do you have any input on that?
I can look it up and get back to you.
I believe our responsibility is just simply to try to establish the, the process for the referendum, and any pay structure after that would follow. We might have to let the Board of Education decide that. They currently are, you know, they're currently responsible for that now, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'd have to change state law to change their pay, but if we get a school board where people have to run, it might be a good idea to then support a change in state law, because that might help attract more people or voting.
And maybe encourage the Board of Education to initiate that.
Right, and this isn't the end of it, there's a lot more work. You have to talk about the current Board of Ed members, we have to talk about staggering, it's a lot more work to be done.
Well, we're going to have, our next meeting, we're going to have our next meeting, the first meet, the first Tuesday of November. Does the council feel like that will suffice as far as November 3rd? Will that suffice, do you think, our timeframe?
Yes.
Because then the, we won't have another council meeting, maybe on the 3rd, if we feel we haven't wrapped this up, we would have a special work session. Everybody be open to that? Okay.
Can we get some, who would do this, some kind of a rough draft of what the bill would look like, that we're going to, the requests we're going to ask before the 3rd, maybe an email to us? Would Matt be the one to do that?
Maureen put together, Maureen put together a rough draft of how the bill would look. She had originally put that on there with all three options.
So we're down, we're getting rid of the options now. If Matt could redraw that and send something to us, is.
I'm certainly working with Rachel.
Yeah, sounds, yeah.
Yeah, she initially had done it, you know, with subtitles and everything, such as composition residency, et cetera, et cetera. But, yeah, the purpose was to be able to go through this and cut out what we don't need.
Could I ask Bunky advice on something? Do we need to get you?
Could he come up front?
Yeah. Since you work for Delegate Anderton and are familiar with drafting of legislation, do we need to get you actual bill language, or can we get you an outline of what we want? And by the 16th, that would let the drafters in Annapolis turn that into bill language? Do we need lang, just that language or just an outline?
I, I think an outline would be sufficient, because there's actually a bill drafting department, you know, and we'll hand it over to, you know, we've used Mr. King before, but, you know, a bill drafter who will then put it in a form for us. So, I mean, last year, I can't remember if you gave a specific language or not, but we, that still went to bill drafting, even after you. Because they do some research and that kind of thing, and I would say that in addition to, I know, not to get off track, but you had talked to, I guess, the election board, but, yeah, you should get an attorney general's opinion on three options. I would, I would guess that would be.
We're away, we're away from that now. All right, all right, but, yeah, I mean, I think instead of having legislative language drafted, if we can have a comprehensive outline, maybe that might be easier for legal than for us, so.
Do we know who's going to sponsor the bill for us?
Hoping everyone.
We're hoping to have the East Shore delegation sponsor it.
The entire delegation.
So my boss, Delegate Anderton's the chairman of the Waukesha County delegation, and what we did last year and what I assume we'll do this year, so he'll take it to the floor under other members, which are Delegates Adams, Carosa, Sample Hughes, and Maltz, and they'll vote. And if three of them like it, it'll be a delegation bill, and if less than three like it, one of, someone from that group probably will sponsor it.
Okay.
So Delegate Anderton has said on the record that he, he wants what, he doesn't want to interject, but he will take what bill is given to him, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing an entertaining motion to close the open work session, so we can go into closed session.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Pose. Meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Cannon, you may, Mr. Cannon, you may mention to the public to council, we'll go back into session at 2:00 P.M.
I would mention, are we still on? I'll mention anyway. Following the closed session, we will go back into open session as stated earlier, and bond hearing will be approximately 2:00 P.M. back in legislative session. Thank you, Mr. Kramer.